We're back live at our regular meeting of the city council over the city of Pleasant Hill. We'll be calling item 10.5. This is a public hearing to consider draft maps and composition of districts for by district elections. We'll invite our city attorney Janet Coulson to perhaps introduce her colleague Jim Priest, the best best in Krieger, and then at least start the discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, Jim is on Jim is on the line there. There you go. Thank you. This is Jim Priest, one of my colleagues at at BBK. And so let me start off by saying that we've completed. My microphone, is it on? Is it working?
Thank you.
Just lean into it. Okay, we've completed all of our required public hearings and statutory requirements for the first part of this, and we're we are down to selecting a map. And we will be bringing back to you an ordinance. And that ordinance, as with all ordinances, it requires two readings and 30 days before it's effective, but we're looking at a July 20th deadline. We've been given until Thursday, July 20th. We have meetings on June 26th. I'm assuming the July 3rd meeting will be canceled.
It will be.
It will be. And then the July 17th council meeting. And I believe we should adopt the second reading and ordinance on the July 17th meeting. So counting back, we have one meeting, but keep in mind we could always have a special meeting, and the only requirement for the introduction is that it be five days before the adoption. So we could have at any point in time, we could have a special meeting for an introduction. As long as we adopt by July 17th, we'll meet our July 20th deadline. So at the last meeting, we were looking at draft map five, five districts. It was submitted by a member of the public and a subcommittee of council members, chefs and Noah performed to work with us to try to see if we could smooth out some of the little anomalies or if you look at this map, you can see a couple of little areas that sort of protrude stick out and we would see if we could make it a little bit cleaner, a little bit smoother. And so we asked the demographer about that, running it through the computer program. And unfortunately, it takes the deviation on the map over the 10% limitation. And in one case, I think two to four, district two to four, that little piece takes it to something like 11%. The piece from between two and five down here takes it up to 15%. And so that's because the demographer is not splitting census blocks. And census blocks, as Jim can explain here, are sometimes not the most, the smoothest, most regular of of lines. And if you, you're not really supposed to split census blocks. It requires, if you do that, that you force the computer program to to split the block, you have to estimate population. It it just is not considered a best practice at all. We very strongly recommend that we not split census blocks. And so leaving map five, draft map five, the way it is, I believe, is is certainly our recommendation, but I would like to turn the turn it over to council member chess and council member Noah.
Yeah, I actually even tried to go on myself and tried to fiddle with this on district R. And it's it's odd, the the census tract that's in that little yellow peak that sticks up goes way down. And so it ends up creating even more more bizarre lines than getting rid of the yellow thing. And so when we looked at it and tried, I tried to work with it as well, and it just, you couldn't get there. And so this was about the smoothest you could get and still maintain sort of the the base integrity of map five, which most everybody seems to have been leaning toward as far as a five district goes. So we tried and this is, this is where we're at.
If you have anything.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is that I think the reason why we were, you know, okay with kind of just leaving it, oh, at least from from my point of view, I was okay with it was because that the this border here going is almost as it reached Pleasant Hill Road is actually the canal trail. So it's not like winding through a neighborhood or anything like that. It's actually, you know, the the canal. So that's why I was, you know, when I realized, when we realized it couldn't, wasn't going to really work, you know, I felt okay about it because of the fact that that part goes up through the on the canal up to Gregory Lane.
Thank you. And there was an additional issue brought up at the last meeting, and that was a question about an election. Now, we have discussed the fact that we can't put whether to go to districts or not to a vote of the people, because even if the people said they didn't want to, we would still be obligated to do so. We are under a threat of litigation. And so that's not, that would not produce any kind of satisfactory result. And so what you can do, though, I believe the question was, and it was a novel question, it's not something that we've seen anywhere else, but that you could put to the voters two maps, two or three maps, two or more maps, and say, basically have competing measures. Each map would be its own measure, and you would have the voters pick the one that they prefer. That's entirely possible to do. I will tell you that there's a little bit of a wrinkle with special elections now. The law has changed. And if you recall, when we were looking at replacing Ken Carlson filling his seat, we looked at a special election at the cost, running it through the county, which it has to be. And we received an estimate of $250,000 for a special election to fill to fill council member Carlson's seat, excuse me. And that's because, you know, now all voters have to receive a mailed ballot. There has to be return postage provided on all those ballots. We have something 23,000 plus registered voters in Pleasant Hill. So we looked at the cost and spoke with the county about the cost of a special election in November of this year, 23, where there's a complete standalone special election, nothing else going on. And the cost ranged from 208,000 to about 323,000. And and that's sort of in line with the 250,000 estimate we received from the county for the earlier election. We were asking about this year. But if you consolidate with an election that's already going to be happening, given the California primary in March of next year, for example, your cost comes down significantly. And because the county is already holding an election, they're already setting up voting centers and mailing out ballots, and you're just adding on to the ballot that's already going to go. So that price brought it down to between 46,000 and 92,000 to hold a special election in March of 24. And these prices are listed in your staff report. It's at the high end, nine to $14 per voter and at the low end, two to $4 per voter. So that's a distinct possibility. We would still need to account for things that probably wouldn't happen, but could happen. We want to cover every eventuality. So we want to make sure that if at least one of the measures, one of the maps didn't get 50%, at least 50% of the vote, that we had a default, a backup. And that would be in your ordinance that you would adopt now before July 20th. But you could, you don't have to decide on maps now. You could pick two or more maps and call the election, probably a March election is called somewhere around December. Jim, if I'm saying anything that is not in keeping with what you think is correct, please let me know. But I I have backed out the dates and believe that we could call that election sometime in December. And that would take action by the council to call that election and set the measures. And so that's the answer to your question. It is possible. And now I am at a point where we we need to kind of decide, you need to give me direction for how we proceed and what we bring back to you and when.
Does Cole have any questions? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I, yeah, good evening, Jim Priest. Just to add some additional context there. Yeah, under the elections code, the council could conceivably put the measure on the ballot as late as December. But one thing I think we would need to explore is whether we would have to go back and discuss this further with Mr. Shankman or not. Because, you know, we have an extension until July to take action. Is it satisfactory that we adopt an ordinance and then wait several months to take action to put an item on the ballot? Maybe that is something that would work. We would have to just explore that a bit further.
If I understand correctly, though, that the implementation of whether it's an ordinance adopted without an election or there's an election, the implementation of districting wouldn't occur until the November 2024 election cycle.
That's correct. So it may be possible for us to craft an ordinance in a way that sets, as Ms. Coulson said, a a default districting scheme and then putting a measure on the ballot, giving the voters an alternative option. And if the voters were to approve that, that would become the new districting scheme as opposed to the original one adopted by the council. We'd have to work that out, just the timing and, you know, see if that would be sufficient to, you know, take action. The statute requires that an ordinance be adopted, establishing by district elections. This structure may be sufficient to meet that and therefore timely comply with Mr. Shankman's demands. But again, just we would want to confirm that.
Can I just follow up on that?
Sure.
So in that scenario of a default map and then a voting on another one, what would happen to the November 24 elections?
So I think that what he's saying is that we would have a contingency built into the ordinance now. So for example, you would put one or more maps onto the ballot in in March. And let's say neither one got 50% of the vote. You need to have one of those get 50%. If they don't, what do you do? You have the contingency and it's written in your ordinance. If neither map or, you know, gets 50%, then it'll be map X.
Oh, so you're talking about doing it in the March primary, not not a November election. You're talking about March primary. Okay, that that was my mistake.
I am talking about March because.
That's that's where my confusion was.
I was talking originally about November of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, not November of next year. November of this year is a standalone special, drastically expensive. March of 24.
Would be in the primary.
Yeah, in the primary, it's consolidated. It's not as expensive at all.
Thanks.
And and the March primary would provide sufficient time. It'd take about a month to certify the election results and get it before the council to finalize the and declare the election. You know, finalized. And that would still put us into April and provide us enough time to get that to the county and they could process it for November 2024. So yes, all of this is with the intent of being implemented in November 2024, but structuring a decision mechanism here where what's being considered in one could be altered either either possibility in time for November 2024, if that makes sense.
Right. I understand the concern about Mr. Shankman and getting further extension, but isn't it also an option to just put both maps on the ballot and let the voters decide which map they want?
As long as you have a contingency, if neither one gets at least 50%.
If we simply put two measures on the ballot with no default or no contingency, if the voters, in the very unlikely possibility that the voters say no to both maps, this comes right back to the city council again. Because there's no action. Now it's, you know, many, many months later, past the deadline that we've agreed to with Mr. Shankman.
Thank you for clarifying that. You're flirty. Councilmember Chef.
Thank you. So and I might begin, I might be getting a little ahead of myself or on this, but but you were talking about, you sent up, you set up a contingency in the language, in the in the ordinance. But I would imagine you would also have to do that in the language of the ballot measure, right? And say, then say, like, one of these maps is the contingency map, is the default map.
Well.
People aren't going to see the order, sorry to cut you off, but they're not going to see the ordinance necessarily.
But you would, they're competing measures. And so I think you've seen in some recent statewide elections where you've had competing measures. And the one that gets the most votes is the one that wins. And it would be the same thing here. You'd have to have that language in those measures.
But yeah, okay, in those measures, but don't you also have to have in the language in the measures that one of these maps? I mean, I guess, I guess if we had four, I'm just wondering if there's if there's language in there that says this is the default map.
In this ordinance that you'll be doing in July, yes.
Okay, but not necessarily in the language of the ballot.
Well, we could draft appropriate parallel language in the, for lack of a better term, the default ordinance, we could say, you know, it's noted that there is this measure being put on the ballot. If that measure passes, it will become operative. And then we put parallel language in the measure itself. If the voters approve this, this will become law over that certain default ordinance number this adopted this date. We could have those cross references. And so it would be very clear in the legal record that if the voter approved measure passes, it becomes the law. If it does not pass, the default ordinance becomes the law.
Right.
Vice Mayor, what do you think about this process?
Well, I like that there's an opportunity for the public to vote on this. My my question is, how many is the price you quoted per map on the ballot? Or is that like just in general, if there's two maps or three maps, it's the same price?
We didn't ask that detail of a question at the county, but I would imagine that once you, you know, you have competing measures, so you have one measure. And it's the price is really whether or not the county is also splitting the cost, the fixed set cost amongst others, or if you're a complete standalone. And so since the March primary, they're doing it anyway, there may be some incremental additional cost for the number of measures that you have on it, printing cost and the like. But I think the the bulk of the cost is whether or not they're taking their fixed cost and spreading it over a number of different elections that are happening as opposed to just this one in Pleasant Hill.
Okay.
And to follow, just to clarify her.
Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Clarifying comment, following up on Ms. Coulson there. Yeah, typically, I mean, it's a it's a per measure cost, although you tend to have to pay less for second measures, third measures added. They tend to front load that cost with the first measure a bit more. Also, it would be a per measure cost. I'd heard you mention per map. Just to clarify for the record, we cannot put a measure on that tells the voter, which option do you want to choose? The election code simply isn't structured that way. So what you would do is say, measure A would be this possible map, measure B would be this possible map, measure C could be this possible map. And then it would be competing measures. And if all or some of them pass, then the one that has the highest vote count is the one that becomes law and the others do not. So there's a way to do that. But again, you'd have to put multiple measures on to pose multiple alternatives.
And then my follow up was just good. I think you answered, but just to clarify again, the default map could be one of the maps that is in one of the measures, even if it doesn't pass. If we still designate a certain map as the default map, we put it as a measure. Even if it's still unsuccessful, then that would be the default anyway.
Well, it has to get 50% of the vote. So let's say you have map A and you have map B, measure A, measure B. And neither one gets 50% of the vote. But I I think that's highly unlikely. But let's say that happens. You can also have in your ordinance, then your default could be one of those too.
Thank you.
Yeah, that there's two ways to do this. And again, Ms. Coulson and I can talk about this and find the best way to present this if it's the direction of the council. The first way is to actually have two competing measures on the ballot. But then there would be a default, which could be one of those measures. You know, some may think that that, you know, isn't necessary because you're putting a default on the ballot. You just make it the default. A second option that could be considered is in the basic ordinance that says we're redistricting or we're districting, and we're going to this format with this map, that would just be a standard ordinance. And it would go, you know, it would be law on the books, but there would be a contingency built in, which says if there's a vote in March of 2024 that approves this alternative, it will become law. And then this ordinance, the one originally adopted, would no longer be in effect. So you have a default set up by standard ordinance, and then you have one measure on the ballot saying, voters, do you want the alternative? And the voters can 50% 50% plus one, that becomes the alternative, that becomes the law. If he doesn't get 50% plus one, you already adopted the default ordinance. So it doesn't necessarily have to be two competing measures. It could be structured in a different way. But again, that's something we can flesh out if that's the direction of the council.
We wanted to be able to bring to you all options and let you discuss it and see if this is the direction you want to go. But if you do want to go in this direction, we will have a recommendation as to which measure is the clearest and and which way is the clearest.
Okay, and that would still abide, our understanding is under the safe harbor position, safe harbor provisions. Putting it through the the March election at that time.
If you want to go to an election, I think, I'm sorry, Jim, I just want to get one point out. If you want to go to an election, I think the obviously because of cost, it's really not feasible to do March of 23, I mean, November of 23, March of 24 being much less expensive is really the one that we should look at.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not under the safe harbor. We'd have to get Shankman's agreement for that.
Well, we have until the 20th to adopt an ordinance that says how we're going to do districting and how, what's going to happen in November of 24. And so we will have a discussion there, but but we do fully intend to by July 20th have an ordinance in place that outlines how we're going to district by November of 24 election.
I'd just like to, yeah, I'm probably formulate a few more ideas and thoughts, but, you know, I want to hear from the public too on this before. Sure. Well, I do very much appreciate city attorney and her colleague following up on my question at the last council meeting. So it's, it, you know, it's an, it's an interesting question, whether, I mean, I certainly sense consensus among the council from all the meetings we've had and the comments that if we were a five district map, that there's one that the entire council is focusing on. All the latter meetings have been focused exclusively, the subcommittee appointed to look at this particular map. But I'm concerned that we're not engaging the entire community in this discussion. I see very familiar faces out there, and I'm glad to see you all again. But it is the same dozen people that are here and 10 people calling in. And many of them are the proponents of the effort to move to district elections. And we've been criticized, not only, I think, on this measure, but in other matters before, about not engaging the public. And I think an election is the only way to engage the public. And it's not to undermine the importance and necessity of of converting to district elections. I think the entire council is 100% behind the idea. It's just a matter of how we go about doing it. And I've expressed my concerns before about those who have not been participating in the discussion, finding out when their ballot comes in November of 24, that rather than voting for multiple representatives on the city council, they have an option of only voting for one, maybe none, because it's not their turn. And I think that there are those, if if here tonight and engage in a conversation with us, might have viewpoints that we haven't heard from anybody. And I also think this, the the style of governance of the city, I do very much appreciate Senator Dodd's comments tonight that we're the most, you know, adult set of council members in all of his district. And so I think that's why we're being really thoughtful here. And I just think that the city needs a singular voice to express the needs of the entire city. If we add the housing element issue here under district elections, there'd be an immediate no vote because it'd be represented in the district where there's a zoning proposal, given the outcry of the community, that may then persuade others, and we get a completely different result. And I don't think that would be the right result for the city as a whole. And so I just don't want to see us devolve into, you know, a jingoistic approach of looking at government of, you know, what's in it for me. I I think that we should consider the four district map, and I've looked at them all, and we really haven't talked about them. The demographer's map, actually, map one, four district, actually looks pretty good to me. It provides the highest minority coalition of all the four district maps, and it's relatively on par with the five district maps as well in terms of minority coalition. And then the alternative districts, you know, be one district being in the 30% range and the other two in the 20s, which mirrors the five district map as well that we've been looking at map five. So I think that the the features of both, I think, achieve the 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 goals of the CVRA as best we can here in the city of Pleasant Hill. We're a very homogeneous community, and our various populations are spread throughout the the city as a whole overall. And only by, you know, carving certain districts out can we get anywhere near, you know, somebody, a group of people with an influence, an opportunity to influence an election, which may not be available in a general election. So I I like the idea and I like the idea that the cost is certainly attainable. I think it's an expense the city should consider, given the importance of the issue here, to really engage our population about what is they want for their form of government going forward as opposed to the council just saying it's going to be this way. I believe when we were first established, it was by a vote of the population that established our city council as a group of five. It wasn't something the council decided. And I think that we all agree that we haven't got the kind of community engagement from the entire community. And I don't know how else to get that without putting it in front of them in an election. And and they may, you know, whatever they choose. There'll be district elections. It's just a matter of, are the districts going to be five independent districts? Or is it going to be a four district with a singular mayor voice to help unify the council? Those are my, it's my thoughts.
You want to take public comment first?
I do, which isn't any of the councilmembers want to.
I didn't want to get thoughts and talk for public.
Gotcha.
I didn't have any questions.
All right. So no other questions or comments?
I have one question. Do we know what percentage of the voters typically vote in the March primary?
No, I do not. I can find that out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Pleasant Hill has generally high turnout in all elections in the 60s, high 70s, even in the off off year cycles. And in the presidential years, which is next year, is usually when we have a higher turnout, whether it's a primary or a general election. All right, with that, we'll open public comment. If you want to join us by Zoom, of course, it's www.zoom.us. Join the meeting ID 85672553807. The passcode is 443813. Or you can reach us by telephone, and the telephone number is 6699006833. The Zoom information is on the screen as well. I have one comment card, and so we'll start with here in the chambers with Susan Hedges. I have one comment card, and so we'll start with here in the chambers with Susan Hedgesbeth. Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, welcome back, Councilmember Newak. Well, I've had prepared comments, but I thought I've been paying attention and this idea of an election kind of blindsided me and I don't know, it just seems like a waste of time and money to me and I don't understand why, I think I understand why, but all of a sudden now you want to get, you want to get everybody involved, you know, well, what happened to getting everybody involved early on in the process, which you could have done, which a much with a much better notification procedure, which we kept telling you to do. The only other things I was going to say have to do with the ordinance and asking you to include the formation of an independent commission, which you would have time to do because as I understand it, the redistricting gives you a lot more time to make your decision than the initial districting process that we're in right now. And that you include something about best practices, which would be important and that there be some specific requirements about notifying people, particularly people in underserved communities. And I think that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedgesbeth. Quee Tran.
Good evening, Dr. Tran.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Quee Tran and I'm a Pleasant Hill resident and tonight I'm here on my own accord and all my opinions are my own and do not reflect any organization for which I have an affiliation. I did have some prepared comments, but this election thing did take me a little bit off guard and I don't have articulated thoughts in and around that. Just a couple of comments, though, that sort of popped into my or a couple of thoughts that popped into my own mind was that for an election, you're asking the entire population to weigh in. You have to recall, though, that the entire population of Pleasant Hill is not quite majority minority. So you're asking the majority group of people to make a decision for the minority group. And so you do have to weigh that into account a little bit, that you're asking a different group of people to select a map that represents the minority group of people. And in for special or not for primary elections versus general elections, in general minorities vote much less than the general popular or general election. So I would take that into consideration that it's a different population of people that will be voting on this particular important issue. The prepared remarks that I had was basically in and around the four district map. As you all know, many of us are in support of a five district map, and it's been consistent throughout the community. We don't support a four district map because we think it dilutes the minority vote. In twenty thirty, when redistricting occurs, there's a good chance that the entire city may be majority minority and minority vote dilution may not be an issue in twenty thirty. So we asked the council to at least maybe leave that decision to the twenty thirty timeframe. By then, the city council has had some time to to kind of work through a five district map. We'll have three election cycles behind this. And there'll be new demographics with the new census. And the city council in the twenty thirty timeframe can make an informed decision at that juncture. That might be the better way to do things. We can work with the five district map and then talk about a four district map in twenty thirty. In addition, in terms of the merits of the various five district maps, please bear in mind that districting is a necessary but not sufficient step to encouraging more minority representation on a council. The city does need better outreach and needs better ways to engage the minority population. There is to be new or novel pipelines, different than the ones we already have in place to encourage the minority population to be actively engaged within our civic life. So in this, in addition to districting, outreach and opportunities need to be available, but also need to be part of your discussion as you debate this as well, too. It's just not about districting, but it's about all the different processes that go into that that encourage just the minority vote. So I'm hopeful that tonight you'll take the right steps to make the city a more welcoming place. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Sandra Bonato.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am would like to speak to endorse and commend to you the mayor's recommendation about taking a public vote on this matter. This is really dealing with our our elected rights, our voting rights. And for all the reasons that the mayor articulated, I'm very supportive of that. I would like to vote on this measure. And I suspect that there are many others in our community who haven't really weighed the issues of whether five or four is the right number for them. I don't think you've heard from a lot of those folks. So having it come to the public in the form of a ballot measure, puts the measure out there, gives people a chance to talk about it and think about it. And I would, I would strongly hope that you would consider that. Notwithstanding the 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 cost, I do think that it's emblematic of the city of Pleasant Hill and how you respect the voters in our community. That would be the proper thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Teresa Naitz. Welcome.
Vice Mayor and council members. I didn't come here prepared to make any comments, but I was also taken aback with the idea of an election. So I I have questions more than comments. I didn't understand the competing measures. So for example, if I get the ballot with two measures, measure A is this map, measure B is this map, I can vote on both of those. So it's possible that neither one of them will get fifty percent or both of them might get fifty percent of each voter has a say. So it's not an elimination. It's not A or B. It's you can vote on both.
That's my understanding.
Confusing to me and I'm pretty fluent in English, so I'm thinking about people whose language is other than English as the first language, how that would be so confusing to them to make that selection and to understand the basis. And then the second question I have is if we should, you know, go to the default map because neither one of those measures has over fifty percent, who chooses that default map? So then it's back to city council's decision, right?
No, the default map is selected by the council before the election. Puts it to the voters to decide which of the two maps to select. If neither passes, the default map selected by the council is the one that becomes operational in November twenty four election. I'm sorry you're all surprised. I mean, this did come up at the last meeting and it is part of the staff report about the discussion about the election and the cost and the process, but not the actual particulars that we were discussing and all hearing for the first time together.
Okay, so so then my my comment is I think it would be very confusing to have competing measures on the ballot. And specifically for people who may not understand what that means, and especially the people who aren't here at the meeting to hear the background on all of that.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. Bob Kattenberg.
Okay, let me ask a follow up question to the lady just now. Do I understand that if you had measure A and measure B, that neither of those by definition would be the default map that you would choose and have written up as an ordinance?
No, I think one of them would be the default map.
Okay. I recall, I think it was at that special Saturday meeting. One of you people made the comment, well, when this is all over and done with, there's going to be a whole lot of people who say, what? When it just happened. You spend so much time and energy. And and here I am thinking, am I contradicting myself from my first trip up here tonight? You've had, you've had, there, there were a whole bunch of people here tonight for all sorts of other worthy reasons than this discussion now. And now we're left with nine people, something like that, who who sat through everything so that they could hear what what this is going to be all about. You're very persuasive about your thinking about having an election. I mean, I I get that. But so much time has been spent. First of all, would 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 Mr. Shankman have to agree to this? Or or does that just go automatically as long as you have that ordinance in hand, having been read twice, or whatever the process is?
I would think that if there was a an ordinance in place adopting a district map, Mr. Shankman's concerns would be resolved.
Okay.
And our concerns with Mr. Shankman would be resolved.
Were resolved as well. I I just if you've had what, all told, in what, six meetings? You've had maybe a hundred people? Not even? I mean, the biggest population you had was at that Saturday meeting. How are you going to get, how are you going to get the the voting, the registered voters of the city engaged and up to speed? To have a valid election. Somebody made the comment about about people whose, you know, first language isn't English. I mean, we see this year after or election after election with with, you know, state propositions. And then those are crafted in such a way that they are damnably confusing. And and yes means no and no means yes. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I very much appreciate them. I don't have any other cards, so I'll turn to our virtual audience. Any callers?
We have two hands raised. Andre, please proceed.
Hey, can everyone hear me?
Welcome, Andre.
Thank you. Well, I guess everyone saw my hot mic earlier, so you can see that we're a normal family. So so start with that. That was, that was interesting. Thank you for Gianna for pointing that out. So with what we talked about with the potential elections, you know, the community's lack of engagement is not the reason to force them to engage with a special election. We have, we have all as representative of our communities brought to you solutions with map five, along with petitions, along with signatures to show you that there's several people in agreement with that throughout the community. Now, in the fifth hour, we have a curve ball, nonetheless, at the expense of taxpayers in our community. Why don't we take the advice of engaged citizens who have been talking to you, adopt map five, and later we can decide if we need a ballot measure. I'm going to reiterate the fact that we have all spoke to you. North of Camelback and East Conchacosta are the two most important districts, which you do with the rest of the city. Is 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 not really a concern of ours. We want those two districts. Obviously, we can't have great choice. Our charter doesn't allow it. Instead of kicking the can down the road, I support the adoption of that map and not necessarily forcing it down the road. So I would implore the council to just finalize this decision. Let's just move forward with other city business and get this out of the way. And if down the road, we decide we want to engage the whole city and have that expense, let's do it at the time that we have a normal election in twenty twenty four or in twenty twenty six. Actually, we have to do it in ten years, so we'll just do it at that time. But at this point, let's 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 save the taxpayers' money. We already have budget shortfalls. We're having an economic situation where Oakland is in a budget deficit. We're probably going to be in a budget budget deficit. And this is not a fiscal responsible way to spend our funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre, for your comments. You said there's another Zoom caller.
Yes, Ms. Lieberman.
Ms. Lieberman?
Sorry, we're having that.
Hello? This is Michelle Simone.
Okay, Ms. Simone, go ahead.
Okay, I'm calling in just to, I guess, pee back on what all of the other callers have said. This appears to be a confusing act, so instead of attempting to educate and to get more feedback, I think this would actually be a measure that would be quite confusing and still angering to the public. They would feel like they were still surprised and I'm guessing likely not vote at all if they didn't want to move to districts. I'd also want to mention that Antioch has lately been trying to move away from at large mayor system and they wanted to go to five districts, but were unable to do so and so they'd have to wait until twenty thirty. So you might want to look at some of the issues that they were having and what that could cause. Also, no one has done this before, correct? So I just want to put out there that it's not a proven S V or A solution. Is that correct? So if we're trying to, you know, all before everyone was talking about moving to districts because they wanted to make sure they prevented a lawsuit. They want to just be safe and make sure we move towards districts. This could potentially go against that, right? This isn't anything any other city in California has done, so we don't know if it's something that could be allowed. I'm just, I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Simone. We have another caller.
Ms. Lieberman, please proceed.
Yes, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Yes. I I wasn't, I mean, I was at the last meeting and I did hear you talk about an election. I have mixed feelings about it. I like the idea of getting the widest possible participation. But the way you're you're planning to structure it, it's like you're going to have the default map of the map that everyone who has participated that has really pointed you towards the map five with the five districts. And then you're going to throw in another map, one one other map, which you will arbit, I think arbitrarily choose. And Mayor Flaherty had a couple of favorites that he nominated. But that still is a very narrow choice for the voters and the and the the second map will still be of the council's choosing with really very little direction from the active public. So I, I mean, I I see that you want to have an election though, so that you can really say that you've given this to the voters and I I see that you that that sounds good. But I'm I'm skeptical about how you're planning to do this actually. And because it seems to me it's almost like a a red herring, like you you already have had a lot of direction from the people. Yeah, it's the same people because we're the people who care. And so, yeah, we show up. So I guess that's what I have to say, that i- if you're going to do this, maybe take some more public comment about what this arbitrary second map should be or somehow not, don't just pick one that you like and throw it in because you like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lieberman. Are there any other callers on Zoom?
Nope, there are no additional hands raised.
And I have no other cards. I think everybody in the room has spoken, actually. Thank you for that. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion.
I may.
Vice Mayor, man.
Yeah, so just to clarify some of the confusion out there.
Yeah, so just to clarify some of the confusion out there. Whether there's one or two measures, there's going to be a default districting. So no matter what happens, it's going to be districting. Am I correct in that assumption?
Correct.
So just want to clear the air on that. So there's no at-large option. It's just what maps we look at from that kind of point as far as measure competing or not. Okay. And it can just be as simple and as rudimentary as five districts as one measure. And then, like, uh, Mayor Flaherty said, a competing measure could be four districts with a direct elected mayor, as simple as that verbiage, without complicating the issue too much beyond that.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then my understanding with voter ballots, they do come in other languages that people elect what language they would like their voter ballot to come in. I don't know if you're versed on voter law or things like that, but generally, I think that's the ballot does come in alternate languages besides just English.
Yes.
Okay, um, and then all registered voters get a ballot by now California law. They're automatically mailed a ballot for each election cycle that's being held, so they don't have to go to a polling place. They don't have everybody gets a ballot across the board who's registered.
Yes.
Okay. Um, because I know as a city for this process, we tried to do an outreach and looking through the staff report, I think it cost us twelve thousand, close to that was the budget for the direct mailers to advertise this, and some people said, I never got that or I didn't see it. But I I don't think that would be the argument for a ballot, because then there's a bigger issue. If somebody's not getting ballots or things like that, that that's another separate discussion point. Um, so I I I I still feel like, you know, there was a comment that the people that aren't, you know, everyone that's been here and shown up cares, but I think there's a lot of people out there that still care also, and I don't want to discredit those people. Um, and I want to at least give the opportunity for them to have a voice. And I think, given the cost of it, the better cost um for the city would be to the March twenty twenty four election. This is kind of my two cents for that for. Okay, so that's my comments for now. Thank you.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Sure.
Councilmember Noack.
I I will start off with the the participation discussion. Because as many of you saw, we had a housing element meeting last week or the week before last. I was on the East Coast, so it took me till two in the morning uh to go through that one. And when people are interested in a subject, they really get involved. We had so many people in here. We had the overflow parking lot, uh overflow room. Uh, so when people are interested in a topic engaged, they really do get engaged. And so I think we have tried to get this information out to the public. I'm not sure why people haven't taken to it. But when I speak to people saying, do you know this is happening, or, you know, you have any thoughts on it? The biggest one I get back is, do we have to do it? And that's not what we're going to be voting on. We have to do districting. So I don't feel like, I think a lot of people uh will be surprised when they see, if they haven't been engaged, will be surprised to see two options and not the option of no districts at all. And so I think the election process does get a bit uh confusing, and and I think I I, you know, having seen those two measures before in in elections, I think they're very confusing. And I'm really concerned about doing that. I understand, I, you know, I go back and forth between a four and one and five district that, you know, I just go back and forth on that all the time in my head. But I I don't, uh, I don't believe an election is the appropriate way to go. I don't think, I think we have heard from all those who are engaged um that they like map five. I think we've only heard maybe from one or two people total that have said a different map than that. And um and I, you know, me personally, map five represents the breakup of the communities the best as possible. I think there is, uh, some of the four and ones, I don't, I don't agree with the the percentages. The 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 demographers four and one map has a forty-two point one-one versus a forty-two point two-four in the map five. So a four district does not dilute minority. There is just the same minority. So I don't I don't agree with that statement at all. Um, but I do think this is one of those areas that I believe the responsibility is ours. Um, this is a confusing topic. It's difficult. I don't know how people are going to look at a map and say, I like this map better than next. It's they're going to be just voting on their where they live in that district. I I'm not sure they're going to be they may think four and one and five, but they're not going to be really looking at maps. And so I um, I I find that whole process a bit confusing, and I think we have had six, six discussions about this, and I think, I, in my opinion, we've got to move on and not leave this to to a to a ballot measure. So I know that doesn't sort of appeal to everybody, but I I that's that's my thought.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I'll try me.
Sure.
When the process started, my understanding was this would be a decision by the council. I'm not sure what the statute says, but that was my understanding throughout the process. I appreciate your comments about trying to get the public more involved, but I I agree with Councilmember Noack that we try to do that, but it doesn't always work. We've had a number of meetings. We've had a lot of input. We've had a number of maps. So I'm I'm prepared to make a decision tonight, and I don't need an election. But if there is an election, it needs to be simple. I mean, I would think you would doubt adopt a map tonight such as map five, and that's the map unless somehow there's a vote to change that in March. And I don't know whether the vote can just be, you want to replace it with a four district map or how you do that, but I think it gets confusing and complicated.
I just want to respond. Um, so the council is deciding something. The the council is deciding the map, whether it's one or two for the electorate to decide from. But the council is also deciding on the map that the city attorney has referred to as the default map. City attorney has articulated a competing measure A B. I don't know that I think that's the best way to go either. That does sound confusing. There's no reason the council can't adopt a map and then put to the voters whether they want a style of governance different from what the council has adopted. Uh, as Councilmember Noack said, I think it's true of all of us, the the uh flip flop between a five district or a four district and a direct elect mayor is a close call. Uh, and that's the question I want to put before the voters, not necessarily select the map, because the council is selecting the map. That's our duty. That's our obligation, and we're doing that. Uh, but the question of whether we should have a direct elect mayor and four districts, which the four districts achieve virtually identical parity uh for the minority coalition in one district, which is all the five districts do as well. Uh, and so, again, that's my concern, and and it really was just, you know, triggered by comments of Vice Mayor Rin at the last meeting. It's like, hey, maybe that's the solution here to at least get out of my dilemma of which way to to vote. Let the voters decide. Uh, and that's what all of you have been telling us all along, is that it's, we're not listening to to the people. Uh, and 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 we are, uh, but I know there's a lot of other voices that I've heard from outside of the room that I want to give an opportunity to speak up. Uh, and it may, it may be just a wasted effort, not wasted, but everybody, the the having election is never a wasted effort. But it may be that the general population agrees with the council's first instinct of the five district map uh and doesn't see the need to have the the direct elect mayor. But I think that's an an important question that I just personally think is something that I would put before the voters and not wait ten years uh to decide whether or not this style of of a five district uh it it turned out to be a proper way to go. So, uh, so I just, I just wanted to respond that I I don't think we're abdicating our responsibility, at least I don't feel like I am, uh, by asking the voters to uh decide. And then I might say that the council has picked the five district map, if that's what the council decides. And then the ballot measure is simply, I'd call it an override. Does the public want this map? You know, with the direct elect mayor, and and all that gets decided well in advance of the the election cycle that any of these maps would be implemented.
So just so I'm clear, if we select a map tonight, we don't have to decide tonight whether we're going to have an election down the road. That can be done later.
No, I think we had time until December.
We have until December to call the election. What I'm looking for is uh coming back on June twenty sixth, which is not two weeks from now, but three weeks from now, with a introduction to for an ordinance, and that ordinance needs to tell, I, in order to draft that ordinance, I need to know what direction you want to go in. And so you don't, you're not making any any binding decision tonight, not until you adopt an ordinance. Um, but, and you have two reads on that ordinance. I've seen councils go one way on one read and another way on the on the adoption. But but we do have a July twentieth deadline to adopt an ordinance, and I just need direction on what you want me to put in it. So what I can put in it is that um you're going to select the default map and you're going to uh call an election in December for the March primary timeframe to put a different map on uh or that um and you don't have to select which different map right now. But we need to give enough, a definitive enough answer in that ordinance that we have said, yes, we're going to go to districting. And if there is uh no ballot measure, the the uh measure on the ballot doesn't prevail, it doesn't get more than fifty percent of the vote, doesn't then it's going to be this default map. And so that will be a definitive enough answer to button that up in an ordinance before July twentieth. That's what I'm looking for direction on.
I think Alan's question, correct me if I'm wrong, was can we decide, let's say we decide map five. Could we decide in November, we're going to have an election in March to put it to the voters for four and one, even though that's not in the ordinance? In the ordinance, we just say, we're deciding on map five. Come November, could we say uh now we think we need to put it to the voters, or is, does that have to be done at this time?
I think the direction needs to be given at this time. Jim, would you like to weigh in on that?
That was your question.
It was, yes, yes.
Thank you. My recommendation would be that, you know, when the council adopts the, what we're calling the default ordinance before the July twentieth deadline, perhaps we could include some language in the ordinance itself that would say, in the event that there is a ballot measure placed on uh in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, and it is approved by the voters, then it would supersede this ordinance. And then we would have parallel language in the measure itself. And uh then by operation of the uh measure and by operation of law, uh, the voter-approved measure would supersede the default ordinance. And then the alternative becomes the map that is used in November twenty twenty-four. So I I think you can defer the determination to put a an alternative on the ballot. But I would still suggest that the default ordinance being adopted prior to July twentieth at least have that contingency built in. We won't commit necessarily to a particular type of measure or if a measure would go on at all in twenty twenty-four. Uh, but we could at least have that contingency language. If it does happen, then this is what would happen.
My follow-up to that is, we're not really waiting another ten years. The next census is twenty thirty, right? So we're really waiting six years.
Not going to get the results for two or three years.
Does it take that long?
Yeah, it takes, it takes a year or two to get results.
Number twenty-two.
Oh, I thought, I thought we got him a year after that. No, it was two years. Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't, I I didn't, wasn't aware they took that long to get there.
Yeah.
And then you're going to have to build in, if you're going to do an independent commission, they're going to decide that that takes a good, what, nine months or so, so.
Jess. Thank you, Mayor Flaherty. I I find it puzzling that we are in, weren't this lot, people aren't going to get their ballot wherever, whatever which way we go. People aren't going to get their ballot until, this election is not until November twenty twenty-four. And I'm hearing, you know, wrap it up, get it over with, let's move on. And 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 I I think it's worth, I think it's worth exploring. And I think, but I don't, but I do have some concerns. And when I say it's worth exploring, I I think that if we can create an ordinance that has language in it that sets us up to get to maybe provide that possibility, I would, I would possibly, I could, I could see myself supporting something like that. Uh, you know, it's pretty clear that that default, I mean, I, to me, that was clear that default map is is map five. Uh, I do see some confusion in in this. Uh, and and so I, while I think it's could be a good idea, I have some concerns. Here are my concerns. First of all, I I don't know, one of the direct elect mayor, is that a two, is that a two-year term? Is that a four-year term? I mean, I think that there's some things that we have to iron out, even to be able to, you know, we haven't had discussions about that yet. Um, you know, I think that there's some work to be done there. Also, you know, I think we would have to, I mean, we did a, you know, we did quite a bit of outreach. I think this would require even more outreach. Uh, and but but the good thing about that is that you would have campaigns that could, you know, do that, do that as well. You would have campaigns on both sides. Probably, I could guess which which side's going to have a bigger campaign. But they would be able to get to the outreach to those people, uh, to every, to everybody. So I see, so I see some good things in that too as well. But um, the other concern I have is, you know, the 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 council hasn't spent a lot of time with map four. I mean, are we, would we be done with map four? Is that, I mean, right now, we just pick a map? We can't, you know, like,
No, no.
we had a subcommittee and and we talked about it and, you know, and it's like, so that would need to get done. Right? I mean, I think, I don't know if if the, I don't know if the council is prepared to just go, yeah, that, you know, Matt, we're going to go with map four for the other map, and we're going to go with that one. I don't know.
You mean a four district?
Four district, yeah, four just.
Not map four. I just wanted to clarify.
No, I appreciate you doing that. Uh, and so, so that's the other thing. So there's a, there's a lot of heavy lifting uh that that would have to happen with this. And and some, and some pretty clear communication that's going to take, I think, a lot of that time leading up to, I mean, we think that, you know, December is really, is is a long way away. It's not. It's not at all. It's going to, it's going to get here fast. So I just think that um we, there is, my concern about this is I I think the conceptually, I like the idea of it. It's just, there's going to be a lot of heavy lifting to make sure that we're a hundred percent, you know, not only is is the council ready and and is a hundred percent clear, but that the public is a hundred percent clear too. Uh, I just that those are, those are my concerns right now.
So where does that leave us?
Well, can I jump? I mean, I, if we, can we, I think we should, first of all, I mean, I think the low-hanging fruit potentially could be us talking about the 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 default map and maybe and maybe voting on that. Um, that would be the the first thing. And then the second, the second thing is, uh, I don't know, perhaps thinking about an or, you know, maybe taking a vote or something on an ordinance. Or or I don't know, I would, would we?
There's no, there's no voting.
We're, we give direction tonight.
You give direction, that's what I mean, that's what I, I'm sorry.
Something back.
Rookie mistake. Um, so. Okay.
And the ordinance, I heard you would include language with the possibility of calling for an election on a four district map.
Yes, but but writing it in such a way that if, first of all, if we, again, if we go ahead and go with that, that that map that we talked about, if that's, if that's agreed upon, then that we, you would have to write the ordinance in such a way that that map would be your your default for the purposes of the ordinance, and then the language for the four, four district plus one mayor.
It's fine with me.
And just to reiterate, I don't want to beat a horse, but the default map can be the ballot measure for a five district map and the same thing. Sorry, that's your city attorney. Okay.
Yes.
Not even sure the word default is necessary if the ordinance is written that this is the map the council adopted, and then there's a later ballot measure for the people of Pleasantville to vote on something different, right?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Jess was getting farther out there, so I was trying to clarify some of this.
Right. I think we're all, I think everyone has been bothered by the the competing measures uh as being confusing.
Right.
Uh, which I agree. But I defer to the collective wisdom of the council of how they want to to proceed here. So I heard a suggestion that we possibly adopt map five, uh, give direction or give direction to staff to adopt an ordinance designating map five. Uh, and in the ordinance, including some voter override language? Are you?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I I I think as as I mean, I, I, I think as, as everybody said, sort of map five is the low hanging fruit, right? So I think everybody's kind of there on that one. And then the question is on this going to the election process. And if there is a way, as Jim indicated, to just put that option out there, I don't know how we're ever going to get to that decision, honestly, down the road. Um, it, you know, come December or November to bring this up again, I, I just, I don't know how we're going to, how that's going to even come up. And what's going to be different that's going to make us change our mind to all of a sudden use that as an option? So I, I don't know what's going to be different in November that's different from today.
Well, you don't have to do it in November. You can continue on and.
Well, no, I'm just, you, you mean at any point in time?
Yeah. You'd have to do it by December, early December.
Well, all right. So by December.
Right.
We'd have to do it by December. I just don't know what additional information we are going to have between now and a later point in time to make that decision. I, I think it's, I don't expect to have a different uh, input from the public. Uh, we, as you pointed out, the housing element, we put it out there, we put it out there in so many different forms. And if people choose to not participate, they choose not to participate. I don't know that we're going to all of a sudden get them to participate in a primary election on this topic with very confusing ballot measures. Um, I think we have, map five has uh, not only done what we need to do on the minority district, but it has also honored the communities of interest on the east uh, Poets Corner, Groggy Gardens, uh, the minority district, I think that has represented community interest that was also supposed to be taken into account. So we haven't really talked about the fours. The, I, the way I've looked at them, I don't think they reflect our communities of interest, any of them. I think they divide up a lot of them. Um, and so while they get the minority interest um, piece uh, correct, I don't think they're reflecting the communities of interest. And therefore, that's why I, I'm less reluctant to go to that because I don't see any benefit to it. I don't, I don't know why it, it sort of falls, applies on the face of the communities of interest, applies on the face of a lot of the other um, subject points. Um, so you know, I'm okay if we want to put that potential language in there. I just, I just don't see a point to it. So.
No, I, I tend to agree with, you know, we're all paying attention right now. Uh, there'll be something else on the agenda next week. Uh, and I sense that's what you're saying is we're all here now talking about.
Yep.
And, and I, I'm reading, hearing you correctly, that the four district map just isn't an option that you would support.
Uh, none of the four, uh, none of the four district maps, I think, reflect communities of interest that we heard in the five or six public meetings we had. We heard about Poets Corner, we heard about Groggy Gardens, we heard about the east, east of Contra Costa Boulevard. And that the northern um, district being a minority district. I don't see any of the map fours that do that. The, the best one for minorities, I think cuts Groggy Gardens in half, it cuts Poets Corner in half and doesn't do what you know, our focus was supposed to be on the maps. And so when I look at them, I don't see how any of them work. And therefore, I could, I wouldn't put up any of them in a, in an election because I don't like any of them. I, I mean, I.
Yeah. I, I agree. The map, the map four as it stands, I don't, I'm not a fan of either. I mean, that's, and that's kind of what I was trying to say, is there's a lot of heavy lifting here. We would have to, we would have to go back and, and, and look at that. Um, you know, I, I mean, the, the, the idea of election, I really, really like. I like that idea. I like putting this to the people. It's it, it's counter, you know, it, but it's, that's where I'm kind of, it's like, we, not only, we, we haven't even, that's the thing about this, only we haven't even talked about the whole term of the mayor, which I, I, maybe that's not that big of a deal. It probably is, it's definitely not when compared to the dealing with the communities of interest and the other, and the neighborhoods, but it's still an important component to this that I think people would want to know to make up their mind. We haven't even talked about that and we got to fix. We, I mean, like you said, if we were, if we were committed to this, we were committed to, like, we want, we would have to go back and, and, and really take a look at that four district map and make sure it's as good as it possibly could be before we put it out there. We wouldn't want to put something that's you know, not good. And so that, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that have to get, would have to get done here.
Can I follow up on that?
What?
Can I follow up on that?
Oh, yeah, they say, welcome that.
Please. Um, I'm correct at this point, no one can submit a new four district map, correct?
We have closed off submittal of maps, yes.
Okay. And then is, there's no issue if we adopt a, a map like the five district map and then go to an election and change it? We, because someone mentioned another city was trying to change theirs and they had to wait till the next census.
Well, and, and I don't, we are not anti-odds, so I don't, I don't have any idea about what's going on there, but, but the, I think the question that's really coming up is um, in statute right now, if you want to have a directly elected mayor, that is a vote of the people. And the only time that you can have a directly elected mayor without a vote of the people is when you go to districting. And so I think what your question may be is, um, let's say you did have a vote of the people and they selected a four district plus a separately elected mayor. Um, how would you undo that if you wanted to undo that? And the answer is most probably with another vote of the people. But, but do understand that the issue of a separately elected mayor is usually, it's in statute right now as one that um, the people should decide. The people vote on it normally. And there's only one way to do it without that, and it's if you adopted a four and one map. And you're allowed to do that in the districting process.
Thank you.
So if I heard everybody correctly, just trying to summarize that there is a direction to staff to draft an ordinance adopting map five. Trying to count. I think I heard three council members leaving open the possibility of a four district map as a ballot measure. I heard one say no. I don't know that I heard Alan, whether you were open.
I, I'm open to putting that in. I, I, I would like to go with the five and have it resolved, but um, I agree with Sue. I don't know that anything's going to change, but it gives people the opportunity to try and organize and maybe convince us that it's a good thing or convince the community it's a good thing.
Well, I mean, the council's going to have to do some more work to, you know, if there are three, four district maps to refine, we get to move the boundaries anywhere we want.
We can, yeah.
Uh, within the confines of, of census tracts and the other limitations. Um, and then, you know, put that out there if that's what the council wants.
My concern with my initial remarks is I thought we were going to decide for sure there would be an election. And we're not, we're saying, in, in the event there is, that's what we will do.
Right. I mean, if the council wants to, if, if there's a majority council that just isn't supportive of, of an election at all, in circumstances, then I'd like to hear that, then there's really no point in prolonging discussion that there's not a majority of the council that wants to continue. And that's, I'm just trying to count.
I just, I don't, I don't see, I don't see, I, I don't have any problem putting the wording in. I just don't, I don't see it happening. So that's, that's my, that's my two cents. I, I, you know, we do map five, we can put in that option in. But I, I would not likely vote on it in the future because I don't see any way to get that to work. So I'm okay if, if maybe I can be convinced otherwise between now and whenever we make that decision. But at this point, that, that would be my, that would be my position.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, so I think now I heard a majority of the council say map five, ordinance, some reference to, you know, potential four district map if adopted by the book.
I think I, I think I have enough, um, if that is the direction. I don't think we have to clarify it anymore.
Fair enough. That, that is fact to everyone?
Yep.
Really appreciate all of your comments very much and as well as the public comments. Uh, with that, I think we're done.
For this evening.
Uh, and so with that, we'll conclude our meeting and adjourn to our regular city council meeting of June twenty-sixth, where Ms. Catalana will not be present. Thank you, June.